We read the motion back.
We read the motion, please.
Okay, it's for the design for 2B at a cost of $1,919.
That's a motion on the floor. There was a second. Let's do a roll call.
Yeah, $1,919.
That is a motion.
$1,919.
$919.
What?
Yeah.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Let's take a roll.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Lewitin?
Dave, well, it's tight. So it's, uh, it doesn't pass. So... Christian Winger?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from SEC group as presented, as noted in our, as noted in the letter on April 16, 2010, which includes the 800,000 preliminary phase, as well as the breakout of the 2B or the 5, or I believe the blend.
So, I'm lost.
It, it's my understanding that... Can you flip the slide again? Because maybe I, I'll ask for a third time, did I understand this or not? That, that, that this in here that we're looking at is a recap of that high level, correct? And there's an 800,000 price tag on preliminary. It's gotta be done regardless unless we change vendors, okay? And then we do it with some other group. And then we have the middle stage, which is, should be spelled out in here. And then the final design, whether we do the second line, third line, or fourth line, those, it's spelled out in here, but we still have to circle back in that middle stage to say which one, right?
Those are described as supplemental services-
Yes.
-that are not in the base scope of work for that contract.
Okay.
That contract is through the preliminary design stage for the 800,000. That would give you the information and to start pursuing grants and to make the decisions on what final design to complete.
Okay, so if I make a motion saying, I make a motion to approve the preliminary design as presented and noted in, in the tentative agreement, with a not-to-exceed amount of $800,000, would that be comprehensive enough of a motion? I mean, is it missing anything here?
I think basically you're talking about the contract as in the pack. Right, and, yeah, so that's, what was in the pack, it was for the 800,000. We've talked about it here of adding that additional piece to it. But the original one was 800,000, stopped there, if I do more, that would be a separate contract rather than just, there's the same-
Right.
-break in the project, one has a separate contract, one of them is just, I guess, a second notice to proceed on it.
Right, okay.
To answer your question, yeah, what's in the packet is the $800,000 preliminary 30% design.
Okay, that's my motion.
So no ma, no ma, I'm sorry.
What?
Before I go into second, no matter what, we're gonna have to spend the $800,000.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, there's no options on the table below that.
Okay, a second.
Other question. Luzio, please.
Ed, seems to be a big confusion on the cost. Okay, everybody's looking at, you know, we do the full thing, the 1.1 million, $19,000 versus 415,000. The bottom line is, I think the consensus is everybody wants the phosphorus out, the nitrogen removal, and, you know, tertiary filters or whatever. I'm not sure if I'm even saying it right. When, when you guys come back, without the expansion, you know, what's that engineering cost gonna be? Because that's really gonna tell the difference of, the difference between 5 and 2B. And I don't think it's gonna be that big of a difference on the expansion itself. And the other thing is, everybody has to consider if we keep the south plant the way it is, at the 1.1, if the EPA comes down, then we're gonna have to change whatever, the filters and this chlorine thing that was on the sheet here and everything, correct? That, that's gonna be a whole separate project, and that's gonna have to be done as well at that plant. Then that'll be a cost to that other plant, correct?
Yes, and a, a difficult project to do.
Okay, so bottom line is, I'll go along with the 800,000. But when you come back to us, I wanna know what it's gonna be to have the new filters and whatnot in without the expansion. Because the mayor may be right. And, and I always said all along, if we don't need it, I'm not gonna expand. I'm not just gonna, okay, let's do it. And I understand there's, you know, we might be spending a couple extra hundred thousand. It's a possibility. But then again, we may need it. I don't, you know. But I'd like to know what that number is with the filters basically put in and all that stuff, without the extra capacity.
To answer that question, at the end of the preliminary design stage, we'll have the information to have the detailed opinions of cost. And for that, we can include in there the, looking at it, if we don't increase the capacity-
Right.
-which would be, the increase in capacity is by upsizing the components that we're adding. But we could still add the components at the reduced capacity. And at the 30% design, we can go over that and present that. From there to completion, we would need to make a decision, you know, what capacity would you want to build? And we'd have, you know, the detailed cost estimates to, for you to make those decisions.
And the question is, if we just do the filters, are we still gonna, I don't know, whether you call it degrade or whatever you guys said, the south plant under a million, so we don't have to put the filters there? You, you could let us know that when, when you're done with the prelim- I'm sure you don't have all those answers, but this way we can make an educated decision. I, 'cause I feel, you know, everybody's thinking, oh, we're spending extra 700,000, we may not need it. Well, that's not true. It's not 700,000, maybe, the number may decrease. So I'd rather have all the answers, so we're all well-informed. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Anything else, other questions? Let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Who cares? Next sign, the man agenda. Reporting recommendation award a contract to Orange Crush. I don't know if you guys have heard, but there's been some problems with the Orange Crush contract. Dave, why brief the rest of council on that problem?
We had the bid opening on, for Elmhurst Street, Orange Crush was the low bidder. As it turns out, Orange Crush is not pre-qualified with IDOT, although they did give us a, a number of municipal references. And we checked those references and they all came out good. The fact is, there is a, a section in our special provisions that do, does require IDOT pre-qualification. We talked this over with our attorney and he thought that the only way around this would be to rebid the job. It's, it's not, it's not a requirement in terms of the state or anyone requiring it. This is a completely locally funded project. But it's one of our boilerplate specs that pre-qualification is required from IDOT, and the fact is, Orange Crush does not have that. The next lowest bidders do have that pre-qualification. So we discovered that subsequent to my writing this memo, so, um... You know, at this point, we would have to recommend that we don't award to Orange Crush.
Okay, I'll make a motion not to award a contract to Orange Crush at this time. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Question?
So we can't award it to the, the next guy here tonight? Is that what you're telling me? Dave?
It's checking both cases. I'm sorry, Dave.
Yeah, we don't, we haven't put it on the agenda to award him, to, to award it to the second firm.
Oh, had to be specifically on the agenda.
Yeah, we're still checking the references, but we can get that to you at, at our next meeting.
And, and the attorney did say that we should not do the Orange Crush.
The attorney advises that unless we rebid the project.
Okay.
I believe, Dave, will we try and bring this back right to council next week?
I would let do that, yes.
We just don't have a...
If we can do that, then we don't lose any time on the project.
Okay.
Mayor Johnson?
What's the price differential to the next lowest bidder?
$60,000.
$16,000.
The next lowest bidder, it's approximately $60,000 higher.
Well, we'll still be under what we budgeted.
Yeah, still well under the-
Right.
...budgeted and the, and the engineer's estimate was 2.6 million. And these bids are around 2.1 million.
Okay. So there's a motion, there's a second. Any other discuss-
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I wanna, I wanna go back here. You said Orange Crush didn't have the permits. Why wasn't, why's, why wasn't that informed to us before this memo came out? Don't you do that in the bids?
Yes, basically, I was under the impression that we did not sell a bid package to a contractor unless they presented that certificate. And I was mistaken about that. I, they're actually informed that they must produce the certificate prior to award. So when Orange Crush submitted a bid and had purchased a packet, I had assumed that they had, had already presented that pre-qualification certificate. And again, we found out later that they did not have that. And I checked both with IDOT, and I also called Orange Crush directly and asked them the question. And they confirmed it. I mean, they've applied for it, they've been trying to get it, but they don't have it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so there's a second. There's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? But we'll have it next meeting, the next, uh, council meeting.
Correct, we can have it at the next council meeting.
So we bring that right to council. Uh, reporting recommendation, engineer contract to Baxton Woods for this project. I, I do have a concern on this one. My concern is that, how many more other engineers are on that list that are certified to do our streets?
Well, the list contains approximately 13 firms. Some of them specialize in the water, wastewater, or environmental end of things. There are other-
Talking streets.
There are other firms on that list that can do streets.
Okay. My question here is, I don't wanna go another direction that we went with. One engineer firm, Benes Associates, and all of a sudden now we are awarding contracts to one firm. Not that I don't think Baxton Wood does good work. But I mean, they got the INI study. You know, they had several contracts already. And, and we got contractors on there that, you know, we're looking to establish a list that's good. And we aren't giving these other contractors a chance. So that's my concern about this. How many more contracts are gonna come down the line and we're going? And, and let me ask you this. The other day, we sat here, a couple months ago, we sat here and we, we bid on an engineer firm for a project. And we never done it in the past. We always went off the engineer list. So again, what's so different about this that we didn't get a, a bid like we did that one time?
I think what you're referring to is the INI study, where I think we got more than one proposal, although I don't know that we based our selection solely on cost. I, I would say that something like an INI study that involves a lot of testing and not traditional engineering work, you could make the argument falls into the gray area of being more of a contractor than an engineer. Certainly, this type of work is professional services and should fall under the professional services guidelines, which are to not use cost comparison or bidding for it.
But how does the INI study not fall under engineering?
It's being done by an engineering firm, but the bulk of the work, which involves, you know, testing and, and even digging up sewers, you, you know, you could argue that that's more of a contractor type of work. I'm, I'm not necessarily making the argument myself, that's not one that I put forward, but I, I think you can make the case for that. There's other things as well, such as surveying, which again, can fall into that, that gray area. But, but what you have before you now, I mean, that's really more of a pure engineering services, it would definitely fall under the, the guidelines for professional services.
Okay, Alderman Police?
Dave, I'll go off of what you just said. So basically, these guys here, they're gonna oversee the, the digging up of the road. That doesn't call for engineering services, does it? The engineering's done, you did it.
I did the design engineering, this would be for the, for the construction engineering.
So these guys, you know, we're gonna have somebody watching. But the bigger question I have is, in the 131,000, which is 31,000 over what we budgeted, does this include the material testing? I, I didn't see it in the contract here, and maybe, you know-
No, this does not include material testing.
So material testing is still a separate issue-
It would be separate.
-that we have to take care of.
Correct.
And did we contact the engineering firm and let them know that, you know, they are over our budget? And were they willing to, uh?
I, I never discussed what the budgeted amount was with them.
Right, right, but now that we got the price, what I'm saying.
Yeah, if I can, if I can just speak on that for a minute. The original budget, which I think I took 5% of 2 million, which was an older estimate for the job. And I, I think as it turned out, it came in at something like, I think 131,000, it's something like 6% of the 2.1 million. It's not real far off in terms of percentages. My original estimate was probably a little bit low. And, and keep in mind too, when the engineers give their, their fees for these types of projects, they're not just looking at a percentage of construction. I mean, they're looking at how long it's gonna take and how many hours they're gonna be involved and how long someone's gonna have to be out there. So it, it gets pretty difficult to predict. I know, I'm not saying $31,000 isn't a lot of money, but trying to predict engineering fees, that's, it's, happens a lot where you'll get that kind of level of difference. So it's, I guess, to me or in my line of work, I don't see that as being all that big. But I understand that it's, it's over what's, what's in the CIP. I, I mean, on the other hand, the job itself came in $500,000 under what we have budgeted for.
And I believe, I think I had this conversation with the manager. I go, I guarantee you, I'm gonna hear because the project came under budget, it's okay that we spent the extra 31,000 on the engineering. I personally don't even wanna hear it. I, I'd like to know that we actually approached the company and said, hey, you know, we're budgeting this much, is there anything you can do? There's, everything is negotiable.
Well, I think what they'll tell us is we can do part-time rather than full-time.
So you're telling me that there's gonna be somebody out here the entire time that somebody's working on the road, somebody's gonna be standing there?
That's what this is for.
So in other words, if I take a day off of work and I just happen to pop on the job, I'll see one of their representatives out there, standing there. I'll be able to find them.
Well, if, if he's not standing there, then he's out doing something else related to the project. Yeah, I mean, the hours are there.
Well, he would be on the road. I mean, what, where else would he be? Somewhere on that road he would be, right? I don't, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not an engineer. But you're telling me the guy's making it sound like he's gonna be there daily, standing there and overseeing the project. So if I pop in-
That's what, that's what this is for, and that's what the hours include.
Okay.
And I think that's what, that's what I recommend, that's what I think is necessary for a project of this scope.
And I asked this when we were doing the CIP. Why wouldn't we be doing this in-house? And, I don't know. Said you had a lot of things going on or whatnot, then I asked the manager to give me a list of what these things are that's going on that we need to hire out. I went through a CIP, you know, I don't see, everything's not marked "design in-house", so I'm just curious why we can't do it. I really, I don't feel I got a good answer when we did the CIP. I know we passed it, but I, I'm just-
I, I can speak to that, and I guess the best way I would explain it. Sure, we can do it. But I look at last year where we did school street in-house. And we had, between our intern and our engineer and myself, I would say, the intern and the engineer probably worked nearly full-time on it. I probably spent half of my time on it. And I can tell you, that was the absolute biggest project that we could do, that we could manage ourselves in-house without, in my mind, seriously skimping on the amount of time and the inspections we could put into it. This job is twice the size of that one. And it's, it's substantially bigger. It's a, it's a, in the whole engineering world, it's maybe not that big of a project. For Wooddale, I would say it's a huge project. For a staff, for an engineering staff of two people, it's a huge project. So I guess that would be my best answer to that question.
And, and I understand that. The question for me is, what's on the agenda for you and the other engineer that you guys are gonna be engineering while this project is going on? Being, we're gonna hire, this is basically brush pickup. We outsourced it. And we weren't too excited, we kinda killed that one just now. So basically, I wanna know what projects are gonna be done. And I don't need the list right now. I, I know you can't rattle those off the top of your head.
No, I actually have the list in front of me, but, and, um, I, I would say, first of all, I'll, even with an engineer on this, I'll probably spend 25% of my time on it.
Oh, so there's still other work that you have to do yourself here?
Guarantee that. Oh, I'll, I'll still get every call, every complaint, I'll still have to process every pay request. I'll still have to make a good percentage of the decisions for any problems that are out there. But other projects we have, we have two water mains, Hemlock and Edgewood, we're gonna design in-house. We have the Oak Avenue sidewalk, we're gonna design in-house. We have the sidewalk removal and replacement program we're gonna do in-house. Woodland Court detention basing, we're doing house. North Cedar sanitary sewer study that we've been looking at to do in-house. And then we have several consulting contracts that we have to oversee. And again, there's, even though we hire consultants, there's still a lot of work that we need to do on those in addition to just the day-to-day phone calls and drainage problems and everything else that we got. Plus permit review, utility permits, new houses. We've actually got a couple of those recently, so that may be picking up. So that, I mean, in a nutshell, that's our workload for the summer.
All right.
Okay. I noticed there's a rip from Baxton Woods here today. You care to address our concerns that we just had?
Well, the concerns that I heard from you are, if we can negotiate our price. And, and, Dave's right, you know, this is, uh, this is a big project, you know, not just for the city of Wooddale, but for a lot of communities. This is a large-sized project, and you have a, an engineering staff that is, is capable of handling smaller-sized projects. We're, we're looking at having 1,300 hours of, of work on this job. We'll end up having three to four people out here involved in this on a regular basis. We'll have one person out here full-time for the entire construction period of this. There will also be project meetings that will be attended by a project manager. And there will be supplemental staff that will assist with that oversight. So certainly, you know, if it's a demand from the council that we reduce our fee, we can reduce our fee, but we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to cut our, our level of service and, and, you know. Whichever you prefer is, is how it is. You know, we've given you a, a number now that's, that is based on a normal contractor, you know, of a decent size to handle this project. While we have worked with the, the second low bidder and successful projects, I think that, you know, we're taking a bit of a risk. We're giving you an upper limit for our number. If that contractor decides to drag his feet, we're gonna be sitting out there on that job site, hanging out there. And there's not gonna be a lot of progress, but we're gonna be eating up our budget. So at the end of the budget or at the end of the project, I don't imagine that you're gonna say, well, you know, we know, we've recognized that it took the contractor 20% more time. We'd be happy to entertain a motion from you, Baxter and Woodman, to give us a fee increase of 20%. I don't expect that that's gonna happen. There's risk on both sides of this, you know? So I, I, I hope I answered the question. Did I? Eugene?
I think you did.
Alderman Wesley?
Okay, any other concerns? I, again, I'd still say that I just don't wanna go that route that we award one engineer for everything again. I see that going this route. Go ahead.
Just one point of clarification to answer Alderman Police's question about resident, uh, resident engineering as far as their time out there most recently, and I think Dave can speak to this as well. We have a contractor currently putting in the Potter and the Oak Street water main. We had a issue this past week where we had a valve that ruptured and the resident engineer was out there till 9:00 PM. So yes, to answer your question, the resident engineer is on scene continually. They were out there again on Oak Avenue today when I stopped out there. Dave's staff again goes out there as well. So yes, there is someone there all the time.
Alderman Police?
Bottom line, Dave, I'm not trying to attack you, but when people watch this meeting, they're gonna see we're hiring out an engineer. And they're gonna ask me, why are you hiring an engineer when you've got two of them? And I'm gonna say, I don't know, I think he's doing something. If I, if I have a list, I can tell them, hey, he's doing these projects. Bottom line. I'm not trying to attack you or whatnot, but, ah, okay.
No, and I, again, I, I went over the list of what we have, and in addition to that, you know, again, I can't stress enough that Elmhurst Street is a huge project for a staff of two people. That would be all we would be working, I mean, there would be nothing else we would be doing, basically, if we-
I, I understand.
...do that project ourselves.
Alderman Cadella? What our representative from Baxter and Woodman said, I, in general, concur with. I mean, being in the construction industry myself, I understand there's risks to both sides. And as a consultant myself, I understand that if the contractors I'm working with are not the best or drag their feet or run into problems, or if the architects whose drawings I'm working off of are less than adequate and I'm being retained for a, for a set fee, you know, I, I put myself at risk. And, you know, if things go well and we get out earlier than I thought, good for me. But, um, so, and, and I think I'm comfortable with the fact that we've got, uh, we've got Dave Graff and, and his engineer who have other things to do. And this would be a, a full-time job for them and then some. So the concept of hiring an outside consultant to do this, I'm not opposed to. I'm concerned about procedure. Was this, just for final clarification, was this put out for bid?
Don't want the engineering services? No, I mean, in accordance with our policies and standards.
Right, well, and I, and, and, okay, and I understand that. But I wanna, I just kinda wanna throw some old business back on the table here. My neighborhood, where we're doing an INI study, which is a much smaller dollar amount than the engineering here, went out to bid. I don't know if it was official, but I was told that we had at least three different dollar amounts coming from three different consultants. And I thought the research and the information I had was that one of those consultants had probably done this a lot more than the others. And they're not the ones who are doing the study right now. So that's old business, I don't wanna discuss it again. But I'm afraid I see a little bit of a discontinuity in procedure here. And, and I'm, don't get me wrong, I, I know this- Um, and, and I'm, don't get me wrong, I, I know this is a professional service and that we don't put it out to bid. Maybe I misunderstand what the other INI study service is. So, I'm not knocking anything about what's happening here this evening. I'm just looking for continuity from, from consultant to consultant, from project to project. Uh, that being said, I'm comfortable moving forward as staff is recommended.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion? Gonna make an action?
All right, then I guess I will make the, uh, the motion to, um, to award the engineering contract to Baxter and Woodman for Resident Construction Engineering Services for the reconstruction of Elmhurst Street in the amount, pardon me? Hundred and thirty-one thousand, thank you.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger? Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Luton?
Yes.
Dave, I will add one thing on this, uh, agenda. I would like a, a tire list on how many, um, contracts Baxter and Woods has done in our town in the next meeting. I would also ask, uh, on a breakdown on the engineer list, on who's qualified for streets and all that, and break that down. I will be asking for that.
Can I say something? I think you have to have two people to do that.
I'm requesting, I'm, I'm requesting info.
I know, but you still have to, you still have to have somebody else.
I'll be a second.
Okay, he's second. I don't need a motion for, Mayor, do I need a motion for that, requesting something?
Um, I think what the alderman is referring to, it's a previous rule of a previous council, before we direct staff to do a study, which I didn't, wasn't clear when what you were asking historically, over the last twenty, ten, five years, one year, whatever, before they would spend that amount of staff time, one alderman does not have the right to make that, even if he's the chairman. It does require a majority vote.
So, I do need a motion?
Yes.
So, that will be my motion then?
And it, for their benefit, if you could clarify, how long since the incorporation of Wooddale, or are you looking at the last...
Past two years.
Okay.
Past two years on, how many Baxter and Woods has been awarded, and how many, and break down the list of whose streets and whose water treatment plant and all that? I'm sure we can handle it out.
Are we asking for a list of any project that was done, or just streets?
Any projects that are done.
So, any engineering firm that was...
Yes. I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No?
One of both. Okay. Uh, reporting a recommendation, a payment request, uh, final six, uh, School Street reconstruction project, an amount of sixty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. That is my motion.
I'll second.
Question? Alderman Luton?
I understand that there is one resident on School Street who has a problem with flooding in his yard due to the reconfiguration and the work that, uh, was done by the, uh, uh, by, give me the name again, I forgot.
MQ Construction.
MQ Construction. I, before you give them leave to get their money back, I think we should talk to that resident and find out who's responsible for the inconvenience of the flooding. Or, Dave, have you talked to anybody? I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna create time problems if you've talked to somebody already.
I've talked to him many times. We're still investigating his issues. I can tell you, in my opinion, the work that MQ did had nothing to do with his current situation of his sump pump running all the time. Um, I don't even, I, I don't even think that he is necessarily blaming the contractor for anything. I think he just thinks the project in general somehow caused it. Um, but I've been discussing this with him since last winter, and again, we're still investigating it. We're gonna have our Public Works, uh, run a TV camera through his sump pump line and see if that shows us anything. Um, but I would, I, I would hate to hold up MQ's final payment on, on that issue, which they've really fulfilled everything that was in their contract. Even if they were to do any more out there, it would be an extra to them, so I, I, I would rather close out their contract.
I'd like to ask you, what is the dollar value of the damage, um, that we're talking about?
As we sit here now, there's no damage at all.
All right, then what's making it sump pump run? You know, okay, there's the Latin concept, post hoc ergo hok. Latin, translating to English is, because of that, therefore this. It's a coincidence. And are you saying it's a coincidence?
I cannot find any cause and effect between the road construction that was done fifty feet from his house and the sump pump running a lot.
But it didn't exist before this?
That is his claim.
Did it exist before? I'm, I'm not trying to win a case for this man, I'm trying to find out if there is, is a legitimate correlation, or if it's because of that, therefore this.
I have no idea how much his sump pump ran before, and I don't know how much it runs now, I just...
Mr. Luton, I will inform you that me and Mr. Graff did meet with that gentleman at six forty-five tonight. We did go out to his house, we did talk to him, and that's why we kinda determined that we would camera shoot it with Public Works and try to find out if it's our problem. We don't know if it's our problem. They, MQ did what we did. He's claiming that there may be a collapsed pipe on his property. Now, how does that collapsed pipe falls under the city responsibility, knowing that it might be on his property? Until we, until the Public Works camera shoots it and see what it is. We met with the gentleman at six forty-five tonight out there. I got all both sides' stories. We, we have, we have discussed it with Dave Graff and myself and Mr. Kramer to try to get staff to camera shoot it. If it's a collapsed line under his property, it did not affect the construction site at all. I don't know. We still investigating it, but I, my opinion, I don't think it was MQ's problem. I really don't.
To move. Well, I, I'm, if, his collapse, I know, didn't affect the road. The question is, did the road affect his, his collapse? Did the, did the earth movement cause, you know, a secondary or tertiary effect upon the land? And the other thing is, wha, what I was trying to say was not, how much is the damage? But how much, if it is their fault, would we need to withhold? You know, can you reduce this down to, and hold fifteen thousand, or five, or? I mean, I have no idea what it would cost if it is M's fault.
Okay. Even if it was determined that the construction of the road somehow caused the pipe near his house to collapse, and as we sit here now, I have no idea how that could be the case, but even if it was, we really wouldn't send our contractor out on private property to fix it. We would, if, if we determined it was the city's fault, we would probably ask the homeowner to get it repaired himself and submit for reimbursement from us, is how I think we would handle that.
From the city, not at MQ?
No, because I'm, I, I, MQ did everything that was in their contract, and they didn't do anything near his house, and I don't see how they would in any way be responsible for that.
Well, since there are two aldermen from the fourth ward here, and, and Alderman Eugene Wesley has had personal contact with him today, I will follow his recommendation.
Alderman Newzio Police.
I do got a question. I'm not sure where this house is, but I know when they started digging, I think they broke a water main or something on the...
Far end.
At the far end. Well, no, I mean, when they started digging on the north side of School Street, 'cause their tractor was running, the pipe collapsed because it was so old, it broke. There was a water, water main or water, some pipe broke. Was the machine running over his property and might have collapsed his pipe? And if we pay this guy out now, I mean, if...
No. It, it would, I believe that the tractor didn't go down that side.
No, because you can, you can, you can tell where they put the new sod in, so you could see the limits of the work.
Okay.
And the limits of the work are just, are right at the edge of where they reconnected that pipe.
Okay.
So, there, there's no connection. Plus, they, the, MQ's guys came out and rotted that line. So, except for the area right near their house, I mean, they, they made, they confirmed that it was clear.
Oh, okay.
I don't wanna get too bogged up in the details of one issue here, but if the sump pump is running all the time, if there's anything that's collapsed, it's a drain tile, which is like twelve inches away from the foundation of the house, right? I mean, so how could, other than the fact that this particular drain tile might be fifty or more years old, and that there might have been some transfer of ground vibration from the construction, I can't imagine in any court of law that that would ever, that that would ever be constituted as, uh, as a liability of the contractor or the city, that a, that an older structure may have failed, um, nowhere near the construction. I don't know, but you're an engineer, you may have dealt with these cases before.
But you know, I, I honestly, I just look at these as an engineer. I mean, if something's our fault, we'll pay for it, we'll get it fixed. I just don't see the relationship between the work that was done in the street and a problem with a sump pump on a house that's set back probably fifty feet from the street.
Right.
So, but, but again, we're, we're gonna TV the line, we're gonna keep looking into it, we're not ignoring it. We're, we'll do the, every investigation we can on it.
Okay, I have one more question, too. You mentioned that if investigation determines fault of either the city or the contractor, your preferred method would be to have the homeowner have the repair done, and then for the city to reimburse, but do we have a reimbursement policy? Or is that something that we need to, you know, investigate and, and put into, uh, put in a motion if we don't? Because I'm not aware of one.
I don't, I don't know if we have a written policy. We've reimbursed in the past. We've done it for things like mailboxes, where they have a custom special design that they want, and if a contractor's just gonna slap a generic mailbox on there, we'll give them the option of doing their own, sending us the bill for it, and I've processed those before. Um, so I would think it could be something similar. I, we've done it with fence repair also. They have a special fence, contractor may not do it the right way that they want it. They would rather have their fence person do it. We have them do it, and they get reimbursed for it.
So, it's not our first time with the reimbursement rodeo, so we don't have to create a wheel here? Okay.
We just did a reimbursement, or a contractor did it, uh, whenever, alleys with the fence, so we, we ended up with an apple. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second, Alderman Roy Wesley.
Dave, the final punch list? Where is it? Is this it? Just this letter?
Please share it all in the back.
The final punch list for School Street, which was...
Yes.
...probably written up last fall, uh, wasn't included. There were very few items on there. I mean, it was some restoration. There was one cracked square sidewalk that had to be replaced. Um, there were a couple of lids that had to be changed out.
But didn't we ask for that?
I, I thought you had asked for it for the alley project. I didn't remember it being asked for for School Street.
This council asked for a punch list for this project, too.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that.
So, we get...
Just when the project started.
There were very, very few items on it.
Do we get our reimbursement for all our damages from it? Is it deducted?
Well, this we deducted for when our sanit, when our crew had to clean out the sanitary sewer.
What about the street sign that was destroyed?
The streets signs were all put back by MQ, so they...
What about the one they destroyed the first day?
I believe they, yeah, they put another one back.
Okay, and then, uh, the water main that they ruptured, was that ours?
The water main, we decided, we staff decided that that, we wouldn't hold them responsible for that because there was no way to do the work without driving equipment over, and that water main was so brittle, which is why we replaced it in the first place, that it had, it kept breaking all the time.
All right. A motion, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Pose? No pose. Item to consider, future nation, future meetings, compact, take them base underneath pavement, solar power lights, uh, stormwater solutions, uh, Saw Creek Bridge safety, automatic railing installment. Anything else?
I have a question.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
John, with the water main break that was on Potter? Where do we ca in, I know you were out there, but where does an engineer come involved with this? I mean, it, if there's a water main break like that, shouldn't there be an engineer there?
We do, we're here there, on site.
I guess I'm unclear your question in, with respect to Potter Street?
Yes.
Or with respect to all water main breaks?
Potter Street.
Potter Street, there was a resident engineer on scene the entire time. He's there every day during the project normally, but he stayed through the completion of the repair, which is as part of his contract.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, I'll make the motion adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.